As they can and as they will. We're going to go ahead and start. This is a meeting of the State and City Council. It's Monday, 4th of June. We are at the community center. It's 7:00 PM and a little bit. And with those of a like mind, please join me in a flight.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation, on your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. We have the whole council and the staff are here. And so I'm going to ask if there are any additions to the agenda. Are there hearing none? Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, or bias?
Mr. Mayor, I'm potentially involved in a potential development that may take place on second, so I will recuse myself from debate on that. I'm also, by virtue of where I live, a member of RDS/Downtown State. But that won't have any conflict.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark. Presentation, comments from the public. Wendy Stone has a presentation for us on the Brown House Event Center from the San Diego Heritage Foundation. So Wendy, you have the mic.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Wendy Stone. I live at 525 North Myrtle Avenue in Statean. I am the president of the San Diego Heritage Foundation, and I'm here this evening to request the city council's help. Each of the council people have a packet that I've put together. It includes this presentation, a photo from 17 years ago of the Brown House, a recent photo, the pamphlet that we are using to provide rental information, and our most recent newsletter. A little over 17 years ago, the San Diego Heritage Foundation was formed and incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit by a group of concerned community members in order to save the Brown House from destruction. They felt Statean had lost too many historic buildings, and they were determined not to lose this one, too. The charter reads in part, "Once restored, the Charles and Martha Brown House will be open to the public and available to all the people for lawful common uses. The house will be available to the general public for meetings, weddings, receptions, exhibits, recitals, concerts, et cetera." The nomination to the National Register of Historic Places states in part, "The house is owned by the San Diego Heritage Foundation, whose intent is to restore the building and make it available to the public as a social and historic interpretive center." The house was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2002. San Diego Heritage Foundation has invested 17 years and about $500,000 to save the house and property for the community to use for events. The first floor is essentially done, but the second floor remains much as it was 17 years ago. Many memories are contained in the walls of the 115-year-old house, including from its years as Statean's first hospital. We have started the change-of-use process required by the city to become an event center. This will fulfill the original founder's vision to make the house and grounds available to the public so people can make new memories there. We have established rental rates with specific reduced rates for nonprofits. We believe in the vision of the original Board of Trustees to make the house a gathering space for the community. To that end, we sponsor Victorian teas, concerts, art shows, an annual car show to remember and honor first responders, and we have begun renting the space for private events. We want to explore partnering with the library to provide educational programs to the community. We plan to speak with the library manager about providing historic storytimes in the Brown House. We have also collaborated with Revitalized Downtown Statean for last year's wildly popular ghost tour and chocolate walk, and we plan to do it again this year. Since we are located on the edge of Revitalized Downtown Statean's focus area and on the busy North First Avenue, we can act as a hook to help people, to help pull people into downtown, and we will continue to collaborate with Revitalized Downtown Statean. We believe as Downtown Statean goes, the Brown House Event Center goes, and as the Brown House Event Center goes, Downtown Statean goes. If the council supports the Brown House, it is in line with their identified goal of supporting economic revitalization in the downtown area. We have received several boxes of old photographs and documents from Charles and Martha Brown's relatives. Additionally, we were graced with Ernst Lau's historic books and many, many historic photographs. We are in the process of conducting an inventory of what we have to use toward educational pursuits. We would like to work with the city to consider scheduling community events in the house. Possible events include the candidate tour, excuse me, the candidate forum in the fall, movies in the park, or other public events where our space is better suited than the Sigmund Room or the community center. Our research has shown that most successful restorations of this kind require financial support from a governmental body. We need regular funding of our yearly operating budget, at least until we finish the second floor and rent it, which will allow for more stable funding. You can help us with funding in the following areas. City required change-of-use application fee, $1,050 to begin, possibly more. Transportation study costs associated with change-of-use. Estimates we have received are between $1,200 and $2,500 if the city public works director determines a transportation study is required. Curb-cut costs requested by the county associated with the change-of-use. Cost unknown at this time. Could these possibly be included in the current work the city is doing on city streets at city expense? At least partial funding of our yearly basic operating expenses of approximately $14,000. Thank you for the opportunity to share my passion with you this evening. What questions do you have for me?
Non-technical question. Wendy, what's the difference between a Victorian and a Queen Anne home, or style?
Probably the year that it was made. It depends on probably also who you talk to. I'm not certain that I can answer that authoritatively, Mr. Mayor.
No one else asked, so probably not. What consumes the biggest part of the yearly budget? Heat, lights?
You know, I don't know. Insurance, that's right. We have liability insurance that runs about $4,500 or $600, I think. That's probably our biggest chunk.
And the rest of it is basic utilities?
The rest of it is utilities, some costs for printing and mailing things out, or printing things to advertise an event.
It adds up.
Mailings, yeah. We mail out the newsletter. That's one of the things that you have. One of your counselors has.
Other questions? Priscilla, please.
Wendy, thank you. Nice presentation that you put together. So when you say you can help us funding in the following areas, and you have 1 through 4 listed here, are those listed in the area of your need? If they are, then I don't have a question. But if not, my question would be, if you had to choose one of these things for right now, that you, you know, the utmost, foremost thing that you need right now in order to help the Brown House continue on, what would that one thing be?
It would be the first one. We are in the process of working with the city on the change-of-use, and we aren't positive that we're going to need the transportation study at this point. We went ahead and got some estimates in case so that we could kind of try to prepare. We had a business plan and feasibility study that was done in 2005, I believe, 5 or 6. And of course, that was right before the whole economy tanked, which no one foresaw. And there's questions about if it's out of date or not. We are working on a grant to try to help us get that, to make sure what we're doing with it makes business sense. Thank you.
Someone else? Other questions? Well, then, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
For now. Steve? Revitalized Downtown Statean.
Indeed. Mr. Mayor, city council members and city staff, my name is Steve Poison, and I live at 1750 East Pine Street in Statean. I am here as vice president of Revitalized Downtown Statean. Before you tonight is what I hope will be the final reading and vote to pass ordinance 1019 dealing with basic maintenance of downtown properties. This vote has been over a year in the works, and we have talked with city staff, merchants, the Chamber of Commerce, and many other stakeholders, all to hear feedback on this beginning step toward improving the downtown area. During the last council meeting, a question was raised as to the support from downtown merchants that we have. I appreciate that Councilor Cronquist took the time to attend our last board meeting so he could see for himself who participated. We had approximately 15 people at that meeting. About two-thirds of those were downtown merchants. Since then, I've also had a little time to approach additional merchants, and those plus the paid members of our organization total somewhere near about 20 merchants at this point. While we continually strive for more participation by merchants, I believe this shows a substantial base of support for these ordinances. I believe it is up to you to pass these in the best interest of improving downtown in spite of some detractors. These are common sense ordinances. In July, we will have the Main Street Organization here for two days to evaluate our program and get input from many stakeholders in our community. This process will help our group focus on the small steps that will move us forward toward what our citizens want for downtown. I urge all citizens to participate in that process on July 16th and 17th. I'll also note that currently on our Facebook page and website, there is a link. We want every city, every citizen to follow that link to a survey that the Oregon Main Street Organization is taking as a first step toward getting input for what the city wants. Ask questions about what would you like to see your downtown? B, what kind of businesses would you like? Those kind of questions. So I urge everyone to take that so we can have that information. We, as a group, are eager to move on to other areas of work besides ordinances in improving our downtown. We would like the support of the city council, but find it troubling that we were informed that the council did not include a line item for funding us in the next fiscal year. Without you supporting the goal you set in last year's retreat, we will face an even more difficult path, but we are determined to persist to better this town that we truly care about. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that one. Mr. Morgan?
Good evening. My name is Dan Morgan. I reside at 2195, where is it? 2195 Cardinal Avenue here in Statean. And tonight, I've just got three or four questions that at one time was a hot topic here at the city council, and I had to rely just on rumors, and some of them, I'm sure, are not true, some of them may be true. And the topic is, what about the city versus the power company on the poles on Kendall Way? And so if I could just ask a question and maybe get an answer so I don't have to ask all the questions and then try to get them, could we have an update on where we were? The rumor is that the lawyers were fighting it out amongst each other, and that's only going to cost us as a taxpayer here in Statean for the city side and a ratepayer for the power company on the power side. So we're actually going to be paying both bills if this goes into lengthy litigation. But I'm just curious on exactly where we are at this point in time with this process.
Let me refer that to Mr. Campbell, please.
This will be a time where a city attorney is here, but Mr. Lean has told the council in the past that with pending litigation, we can't publicly comment. So that's kind of the position of the council, and any public comments could be used against us in the court case. So I'd advise to not publicly comment on this matter.
I don't even know, are you talking about one pole on the corner there, or are you talking about the whole string of poles down Kendall Way? Could you answer that? I'm not familiar with what the cost factors are and how much it involves.
The matter is power poles along Kendall Way.
Oh, okay. Because I was hoping maybe it was the only one in the corner, and maybe it'd be more advisable to go a 50-50 split, power company, city, or even get the developer involved in it. And that was my next question, then. Is the developer still on board and interested in building his development in that area?
I believe so.
Yes, they are.
There we go. Good.
Well, that pretty well sums it up, everything I had. I guess I'll just have to keep coming to council meetings until something is officially told about it. So thank you.
There are some deep, dark holes and not much daylight in them, Dan. Okay, thank you. Let's see.
My name is Janet Silvernagle. I live at 409 West Locust Street. And I mainly, I guess, just have some questions about the residential, or I guess, section, ordinance 1,000, the residential rental registration. I just mainly want to know, why was this kind of all of a sudden brought up that you guys passed, and what was the main thing that you wanted this fee for?
Dan, can you help us with that, please? Residential registration, the ordinance 1,000, I think it was.
Passage of ordinance 1,000 was about a six-month process. It involved at least four or five meetings at which the council discussed it. So it was not something that came up all of a sudden or out of the blue. To answer your question as to the purpose of the registration fee, the fee is designed to offset the administration of the standards in the code and to pay for the enforcement, part of the cost of the enforcement staff of the city.
The enforcement of the what was that?
The ordinance that you referred to.
Yeah.
Separate from any registration or fee establishes certain minimum standards that residential rental properties must meet. So the purpose of the fee is to partially offset the city's costs of enforcement of those standards.
Janet, what he's really trying to say is that the water faucets should work, there should be heat in a rental apartment, there should be a floor, maybe a ceiling, the toilets should flush, the lights should go on and off, things like that, real basic stuff. We don't want people living, well, maybe they want to live in caves, but not in rental properties here. That's the essence of it.
Can I say something real briefly, too? And I don't know if this will help explain, but what occurred, kind of what brought this up, was is we ended up having some substandard rental property here in town, some people living in substandard conditions. And when that occurred, we realized that we really had no way to help them. We had nothing in our rules or in our ordinances to assist them. And so this was kind of an attempt to try and start putting something in place so that we could help a resident of Statean if they were living in a place that a landlord was not taking care of. And in order to do that, we needed some funding. And so that was one of the reasons that that kind of came about.
Well, then, if that is the case, why don't you just go over, go to that landlord that whoever, for example, you said that that house or whatever isn't maybe up to par. Go after that landlord itself for the fees instead of making it something that all landlords that have, take care of their rentals, that have everything up to par, are still having to pay another fee, you know? I mean, they're not, I was trying to say is, is you're kind of penalizing the landlords that are actually taking care of the property, and the property's in good condition. You're penalizing them, making them pay for landlords, which I will say, I don't know if this is true, is probably landlords that have units of property, you know, like apartments that have 15 to 20 apartments, and they're not taking care of all of them, whereas you're penalizing the people that are actually taking care of their places, you know? I don't know if I explained this very well.
Yeah, you're explaining, you're explaining life. That's why we pay high medical costs is for people who don't have medical insurance, and that's kind of life, and it's not always fair. I agree totally, yeah.
Let's let a big developer try this. Go ahead, Mark.
What we're talking about was units that were feces were falling into the tubs, and block mold was everywhere, the toilets, the wax seals had failed. And you, I'm sure your units are beautiful and fine, and it wasn't necessarily to penalize you or anyone like you. We worked long and hard to come up with a fee structure that was fair to people like you, to people who appreciate their units and take care of their tenants. So, I mean, we debated for a couple of meetings what that fee should be, and I think everybody in this diocese agrees that it, based on the average rent here in Statean of $944 per unit per year, a $50, correct me if I'm wrong, is that true, Dan?
Ten.
A $10 fee was not going to be something that was going to be out of hand. We really, really thought it through, and we appreciate all you're doing for your people, but there are a lot of people who aren't like you as a landlord, and it's our goal to take care of the citizens of our city and to work with them. And we thank you for what you do, but the fee, which is very, very small, is designed to allow us to enforce the law, to give us the ability to enforce the law on the people that don't do the right thing.
So then you are going to go after, more or less, and try and go after those people, those landlords that aren't taking care of their property?
We have, and we have done so with a sledgehammer.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Okay. James Loftus, the last presenter this evening. 25 after 7 by my watch.
Good evening. I'm James Loftus, the director of jplmuseum.org and the owner of the cafe called Gardner House on 633 North Third Avenue. What I'm here to talk about could lead to potential litigation, so I want to ask for your indulgence. It may take me a little, more than three minutes to get through this. So I'm going to start with last summer. Last summer, I attempted to get a sign for my museum so that I could be GSA certified to access government property. I went down and talked with Dan. I was given the application. I read the application, and I determined that, based on my discussion with Dan, that that was going to affect the Gardner House. And so I chose not to file an application. Within about three or four weeks of that, Keith Campbell, along with Lieutenant Charlie Buttons, come into my place of business. Keith slides across to me the application for the sign permit and says, "Fill out the application, pay the fee, you'll get your sign." Now, most business owners would be excited because they're getting what they're wanting. But me, I look at this, and I'm looking at the fact that I have the lieutenant of the police department there, that this is what is called official oppression. Okay? It's no different than if the mafia were to come in and ask me for protection money. So I slid the application across to him. I told him that I hope he likes looking at the gallows on the corner of Third and Burnett because I will not be applying for a sign because there will be impact on my other businesses. Now, it's come to my attention that through this last year, the city manager has managed to disparage citizens via email, either directly to the citizen or to the council. And so I have here an email that was sent out by Keith. And I want you to read or understand the string, if you haven't seen it, because when I asked Keith for a copy of the document that he sent out, he is evasive and deceiving in his answer. He then threatens me with making the requirement for a public records request and possible charge for that document, which he's discussing me. Okay? So I don't know if you've read that or if you've read the letter, but I'm going to read the letter because I want it on the record, I want it verbal, and I want an apology. And if I don't get an apology, Keith, I will start seeking legal counsel to hold you accountable because this board is not holding you accountable. I would have never, ever in my life considered stringing these two words together in a sentence, weaponize transparency. Sir, the only person who has weaponized transparency in this process is you by your answers.
James, we're almost out of time. If this turns into a rant, we're going to credit three minutes.
I am not going to rant. I am simply going to read his letter.
Get on with it, please.
"I know that there will be an internal check of this email group to make sure I follow through on Mr. Loftus's request to share with the governing body at our next meeting. This will be used as evidence on an ongoing conspiracy. I know the truth hasn't been a criteria of prior comments, but I see no reason to provide a talking point that would factually, that would be factually correct based on examination of the evidence. I know whatever I share in this email will be shared with Mr. Loftus. I honestly don't care to get into any meaningless discussion that is not based on the community but is grounded in political attacks to discredit me or my staff. I don't care to spend staff time addressing any falsehoods that is presented in a way to embarrass or discredit staff. I will not allow staff to live in fear or waste resources to obsessively check and recheck every document we produce for a typo, a wrong word, or grammatical error. I will not have staff live in fear of making honest mistakes. We're human beings. We all make mistakes. We can't, we cannot fear continuing to be transparent because transparency will be weaponized against us." weaponized against us. Finally, I won't blame or throw any of my staff under the bus when they prove they are not infallible. As the saying goes, the buck stops with me. So to blame me, we deserve, we should be, excuse me, the buck stops with me. So what blame we do deserve should be directed towards me. We have a damn good staff here and I'm proud to work with them. I will promise to continue to be open and more transparent. I will encourage staff to do so without fear. We spent a lot of time and resources making our budget transparent and understandable for everyone in the community. Regardless of their background and budget, staff made a huge investment in working to communicate with our community. Staff has made, excuse me, this needs to be encouraged and supported. I don't want to feed the chaos that is attempting to be created by Mr. Loftus, and has done this before, we don't need to feed it again. I feel this message needed to be shared. Please let me know if you have any questions." So I respond back to Keith, and I ask him for a copy of that document. His response is, "The totality of your request would be one email which I sent, which you have seemingly already received from a city council member. Can we agree the matter is settled to avoid the need for you to go through a formal open records process and save staff time and potential fees?" My reply to him, "Stop being evasive and deceiving. I want a copy of the email that you sent to the council and mayor, UBC, the chief of police, and others. Please forward immediately. If I have to make a formal request, I should, I will, and you should provide it as a courtesy as you're discussing me." So, Mr. Campbell, I take your comments as disparaging, an attack on my character. Your threat to my business will not be, will not be unchallenged. I would like an apology from you. If I don't get an apology from you in this public forum, then we will be talking through legal counsel. Is that clear?
I actually think that letter's pretty well written.
I do too. I do too, but it's disparaging in its nature, it lacks the moral character that he would not even send it to me, when he knows I'm gonna get a copy of it.
Mr. Loftus, for the record.
That shows courage, or lack thereof.
Mr. Loftus, for the record, you know that, is that letter a public document?
That is a public document. Therefore, I consider it disparaging. It was directed by this man. I want an apology. Are you gonna give me one?
I think we're done, James.
Okay, thank you, Keith. We have now set the rules for any future entanglement. I want you to understand that.
Okay, James, thank you.
I've got his water.
Have a good evening.
Okay. You're welcome to stay, James. Being the kind and loving person I am, I'm always trying to be considered.
I'll adjust a few other things while I'm at it, since I'm on the charge here. This gentleman has never been in my business to ask me about the redevelopment of downtown, okay? As far as this fee for rental properties, it's BS. All you have to do is call up Oregon Health Authority, excuse me, Marion County Health Authority, and they can enforce those rental laws. So there's already ordinances on the books. You do not need to start charging customers more.
Well, we went there with, I don't want to get in an argument over that, we went there with those agencies and they're very little or no satisfaction. Adios. We tried to create a loving, friendly atmosphere here. I'm not sure everyone always respects that. We keep trying. Let's go to work. Okay, there's nothing else? The consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the consent agenda as written.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written. It includes the May 21st, 2018 City Council minutes, Resolution Number 977, adopting fees and charges for various city services, acceptance of deeds for easement for pedestrian paths, and Department of LCDC Land Conservation and Development Housing Assistance Grant. Is there a second on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull Letter B on that one. We could.
Okay, all right.
I'm good with that?
All right, Letter D, number D.
I'll withdraw the motion and amend it to pull Letter B.
Well, let's see what.
I'd just like this to discuss the increase in some of the fees before we just pass it.
I withdraw the motion and amend it. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, motion withdrawn. Discussion on Item D.
My question was, a couple of them. The first one, I was, let's see, where is it? Do we have a fee on there still, Chief, for the garage sale? I thought at one point we waived the need for a permit for the garage sale anymore. So does that not negate, do we need to address that section of the code?
Correct, there, there is no fee for a, for a garage sale permit.
Yeah, but there's still a fine for it, right? Five hundred bucks?
Yes, that, that is, that fee is for somebody that has a, that violates garage sale laws, that has a continual garage sale every weekend or throughout the, that's for violating the, the garage sale standard is still there, there's just no requirement to have a permit.
Okay, how often has that been enforced, you know? Correct, when's the last time we enforced that?
Couple of weeks ago.
Really?
Is that the garage sale on, is that the one on Fourth Street?
Yeah, it was an enforcement action.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then maybe we could just address the increase in planning fees, that's what my big concern was. We went from the application for staff review of 150 bucks, planning commission hearing up the 300, it looks like, comprehensive plan map, 1,500 bucks from 13, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just kinda curious why, what they need for the increase.
For the past year or so, well, first of all, let me back up. The, the fees that are listed in the resolution are all a deposit. They're not the fee.
Gotcha. That's your return.
What is not spent is returned, and if the city's costs exceed the deposit, the applicant is billed for the balance.
Gotcha.
To reflect the city's costs. The increase is proposed because for the past year or so, most applicants have been billed because our costs exceed the deposit.
Okay.
So, it's still, in the end result, it will still be the same amount to applicants regardless of what the fee in the resolution is, but we get, the reason for the increase is, is because it reflects our costs more accurately.
Fair enough, and the change in the SDCs, I know we talked about the water one last year or so.
The changes, the, the SDC fee resolutions all say that we will do an annual inflation adjustment, so the, the change in the resolution reflects a 3.0% increase based on the engineering news record cost, construction cost index.
Fair enough, I just wanna make sure it was transparent, Mr. Mayor, before we just voted on it. So I'm good unless anyone else has any questions.
And then I move we accept this?
Okay, we've got, let's start over, start with the motion and what the changes are.
I move we accept it after Counselor Quigley's good input.
Second, so to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Question, a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as amended, is, there's no other discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? I should've been a little quicker on the uptake on, on, I believe in free speech, but people want to do these personal attacks at these things, that is, that's beyond. Let's see if I learned anything, if we get this same scenario another time. Apologies all around. Okay, let's see. Public hearing, certifying eligibility and electing to receive state revenue sharing funds. All right. Staff report, Andy Parks, but first. Oregon Revised Statutes, Number ORS 221.770, requires two public hearings to be held from citizens regarding the use of state revenue sharing funds distributed to the city of state. The first hearing was held at the Budget Committee meeting on May 14th of this year. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony on the proposed uses of the funds. Before opening the public hearing, we'll receive the staff report. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and to the city councilors. As you mentioned, the Oregon Revised Statutes provide for these public hearings, two elements to this. One is Resolution 978, which certifies the city's eligibility to receive these funds, and that notes that cities located within a county having more than 100,000 inhabitants must provide four or more of the following municipal services to be eligible to receive those revenues: police, fire, sanitary construction, maintenance, lighting, sanitary sewers or storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and one or more utility services. As you're aware, and as the resolution sets forth, the city provides four or more of those services. The next resolution, 979, declares the city's elections to receive state revenues, and in this process, the state requires annually the city to pass such a resolution. The proposed uses of funds include, there's $9,400 estimated to be received from the state for cigarette taxes, they are included in your general fund for police and other general purposes, 143,200 from liquor taxes, also in the general fund for police and other general uses, 79,000 from state revenue sharing. This makes for a total of 231,600 in the general fund. There is also 566,800 in state gas taxes shown in the street fund, for a total of 788,400. We'd be glad to address any questions that may come up during this process.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Andy. We're gonna open the public hearing, and that, we'll, we'll go to questions or, or comments on this. Brian?
Andy, the 566,800, said state gas taxes, is that inclusive of our local gas tax?
No, this would be exclusively the state's, state portion.
Okay. And where is the local? Is that, I recall it.
The local gas tax is also in your street fund, and the estimated revenue for fiscal 19 is 215,000.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. That's a not insignificant amount of money, is it? We can do some things with that. pave those streets. Okay, anyone else? Let's see.
And move we approve?
It's a public hearing. Anyone want to say anything about this? In a kind way. No one's gonna stand up and say, "Let's give it back." Give it back. Jesus. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve, as presented.
No, can't do that.
Well, we gotta do some of the things here. Public hearing's still open. Comments or thoughts?
Brian got my question.
Okay, no questions? I guess there's no other questions on it. The audience is aware that we've got a bunch of money coming in. Andy just told us that. Did you do all of it? I was unfocused there for a minute. 9,000 from cigarette taxes, 143 from liquor, 79 from state revenue sharing, 231 in the general fund, and a half a million dollars plus in state gas taxes in the street fund. 788,400.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a new guy question, if that's okay?
Go ahead, please.
So, I'm almost embarrassed to ask, but do we, will we ever see the marijuana taxes coming in?
The answer to that is yes, and the city has been receiving marijuana taxes. They do not fall under this state statute.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Chris, that came up, Counselor Mullen, that came up during budget hearings when we tried to find out.
Where I was?
No, no. You were collecting the marijuana to be taxed. No. New guys don't get told when, where the budget, or when the budget hearings are, so they're rightfully in the dark. No, just some mistakes there. There are some procedural things with, with finding out.
Are we still in a public hearing?
What's that?
Mr. Mayor, we need to close the public hearing. We, we veered off, sir.
Yeah, I think we're still talking about this, but I appreciate the help. No? Let's see. Close of public hearing, council deliberation, what do you folks want to do?
I move we accept as written, sir.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, a motion and a second to certifying eligibility and electing to receive state revenue sharing funds. Motion and a second, any other discussion? Any other help from the right? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
What?
Just to make sure, there's two resolutions here, correct?
Yeah.
978 and 979.
We need two separate.
978 first.
Yeah. All right, so, we need to do 979. Oh, joy.
So, there's a second, there's a motion and a second on 978, correct? So we need to vote on that.
Yeah, we need to vote.
Close the hearing, correct?
That's what I was gonna do, was vote on 978. But then I had all this unneeded and one wanted help.
She didn't have the second, sir.
Well, I'm not gonna ask her to poll the council unless there's a second, so I heard it. Please, poll the council.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Uselman?
Yes.
Counselor Glidewell?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Thank you, folks. Uh, city of, no, there's, there's two of those.
979.
Yeah, 979. Of resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Okay, I think we've got, gotta read another thing here. 970, where the hell is it? It's here. I've got enough paper up here to... City of Stateon, 2018, 19 fiscal year budget.
Mayor, you don't need to do that one yet. We just need to adopt the second resolution. They were both part of that first public hearing.
I move we adopt 979 as written.
All right.
Second.
A motion to accept Resolution 979. Why do you suppose they ask you to do this, this public hearing?
Well, the second public hearing will be for the budget. That'll be next.
Yeah, I don't have to do that now.
Nope.
That's what she was trying to say. Okay, all right. City of Stateon, 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget.
No, no, no. Mr. Mayor, we're at, we're at.
We're at 979, sir.
We have a motion.
We need to vote on 979, sir.
Now, just hold your water, please.
We have a motion and a second on the table to approve Resolution 979.
And, but we don't need a public hearing on it?
No, we finished that already.
Oh, good lord.
You're jumping ahead.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve Resolution 979. Is there any discussion? There isn't any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Hearing ended, we'll prepare the motion pass. Thank you. That's five to zero. All right, now there is a script on all this stuff, and I thought I was following the script, apparently not. Okay, we ready to go to City of Stateon?
The budget.
2018, 19 fiscal year budget. And you'll notice that I know how to say fiscal, it's not physical.
Let's...
Physical... Physical year budget. No, it's a budget year. All right, staff report, Andy Parks. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 15, 2018, the City of State Budget Committee approved a city budget for fiscal year 2018-19, including levying the city's established permanent tax rate of $3.32.8 per thousand of assessed value, and a local option property tax at the rate of 60 cents per thousand, as approved by state and voters on May 17, 2016. Scheduled at the beginning of this meeting is a public hearing before the council, as required by Oregon budget law, to receive public input regarding the budget as approved by the budget committee. Local budget law allows the governing body, the city council, to make changes to the approved budget during adoption, as long as the appropriations in a given fund are not changed by more than $5,000 or 10% of the appropriations, whichever is greater. Wanted to review a few things with you. At the time, in the time since the budget committee approved the budget, staff is recommending two amendments in two separate funds, each with limitation, within the limitations established by Oregon budget law. The first one is within the water fund, we're recommending increasing the capital outlay appropriation by $200,000. This is related to a project on Shaft Road for water improvements. We had estimated $200,000 being expended in fiscal year 1718 for these improvements, and the budget next year had not included that $200,000. It turns out that that project's cost will be exclusively in next year, and so we are reducing the propos, or the year-end estimate by $200,000, carrying that amount over and requesting that the full appropriation be included in next year's budget. The second change is in the library fund. It's a little bit different there. We are requesting or recommending reducing the capital outlay appropriation by $47,000, increasing the contingency by $9,500 for a net change in the budget for library of $37,500. There is a roof repair that was originally budgeted at a cost of $50,000 in fiscal year 1718. We, at the time of budget preparation, thought that would slip into 1819. It's actually getting done this year, so we are showing the year-end estimate going up to reflect that, that cost getting done. And then, since that project will be done, we're not needing to reappropriate the dollars next year. So, the net of all those things, and the updated information again, is reducing capital outlay by $47,000, increasing the carryover by $9,500, which increases the contingency, and then it's a total net reduction of $37,500. Those changes are included in the resolution. You'll see those as the approved budget, the suggested changes, and the adopted budget total, assuming you don't make any further changes, are in that final last column. Again, any changes deemed appropriate as a result of public testimony received at the public hearing on the 2018-19 budget should also be made at the time you go to pass or consider the resolution before you. The total budget is $26,783,692. Total appropriations or spending authority is $22,703,135, and the general fund budget for spending is $5,483,200. Be glad to address any questions you may have.
Okay. All right. We've got a public, a public hearing on this. Thank you, Andy. Public hearing is now open. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on, on Andy's presentation or the budget itself?
Go ahead, read the...
That one, no.
Well, finally, I do get to read this.
You're going to get to read that.
Oh, thank goodness. Oregon budget law requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body prior to its adoption of a budget for the ensuing fiscal year. Purpose of this hearing is to receive public input and testimony concerning the budget approved by the City of State and Budget Committee. And we have had the budget, a staff report, and so the hearing is open, and are there questions about this budget? Thoughts?
I have a question.
I'll probably get accused of wandering off, off base here, but I want to ask just a second. Did that, that library roof, do that come in where it's supposed to, and no big problems? On budget, finished? Wonderful, thank you. Yeah, that's a good one. Something else? Please.
So, I actually have a question. I was at the Budget Committee, and for some reason, I think that I misunderstood something that occurred, and I only realized it tonight when someone spoke. When I asked in the Budget Committee about why there wasn't a line item for the group that is helping to restore Old Town State, and I understood it was because that we were last year plugging a hole of some kind for Ford Foundation money, and this year that hole was not going to be there, and so we didn't... I guess I had the impression that there was communication between the group and the city that, that that money was not going to be needed, and obviously, that was my, must have been my misunderstanding that somehow... I guess I'm confused also as to why there wasn't money allotted for that group.
Okay. Who wants to tap a lap?
And I guess maybe, maybe you could clarify, Keith, what, what your answer to me was when I asked that question in the Budget Committee, so...
I'm trying to remember the exact question, but last year, we had talked about, we had money in place in an economic development fund that we had used as potential for, the concern being that the rare person wouldn't have the funding, so, and part of Dan's economic development fund, we had discussed and brought forward, when that funding that Fots was trying to get for the rare person didn't come through, we used that money for covering that additional cost and brought that to the city council.
Was, but wasn't there an actual line item other than that in there? Was there, wasn't there other funding other than... I guess I'm confused. I, I thought there was funding other than just the...
For, for a rare person for this year, we had no funding in place for a rare person for this year.
Okay. And was that, I guess I understood it was because they didn't need it for the rare person, and that's, is not the case?
Certainly. Steve, thank you.
We will not know if we, first, we have to see if we get a rare person, and then the Ford Family Foundation, after you're assigned a rare person, decides if they're going to help you fund that rare person. So, we do not know whether we're getting funding from them again this year. We won't find out until late July, probably sometime. There also, to answer your second part of your question, there was an additional funding line item last year for $5,000 that was given to the design committee through Dan. He was the approval contact for our group. As we came up with projects, for instance, the sign toppers that are about to go up, Dan was asked to approve if that seemed appropriate for our project, and once he approved it, we were allowed to spend that money. And that's the money that I am now told, which I just found out sort of secondhand, is not in the budget this year either. That there's not a $5,000, there's no money for our organization, is what I was told.
Yeah, if I could clarify.
Andy?
Yeah.
Please.
So, the line item that is in this year's budget includes $5,000 for the downtown. This is the line item that includes, is referred to as the Neighborhood Improvement Grants. It's $10,000. $5,000 of that is the downtown organization, and then $5,000 for other to be identified through the program that we talked about at the Budget Committee meetings. So, the $5,000 is in the budget.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
Good. So, what we, so that kind of clarified for me, because, because there were two separate, kind of separate issues there. One was the, the rare person, and the other is that. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Steve, is that some reassurance for the downtown group?
Very much.
Okay. Good. All right, other questions? Others, others. If not, let's close the public hearing and go to council deliberation. What would you like to do with this, folks? Council decision on Resolution Number 980, adopting the fiscal year 2017-18 city budget. Should be 1819, shouldn't it?
Yes.
By the way, we can go back and forth, though. I'm all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Making appropriations, living property taxes, yes.
I offer a motion to accept the Resolution 980 as submitted.
Second. And the way it's written in our packets, it's, it's got the right dates on it.
Oh, I'll read it again. I offer a motion to adopt the 2018-2019 budget as presented.
Second. All right, a motion and a second to adopt the 2018-19 fiscal year budget for the City of State. And it, let's see, it levies, anyway, it's got it on there. The rate of $3.32.8 per thousand, and 60 cents per thousand for voter-approved local option tax levy. Any other comments or questions or thoughts? Alyssa, would you, and there was a second on that one, so would you...
Yes, I got it.
Would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Gideball?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Ussleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, five to zero, all right. Unfinished business. Ordinance Number 1019, amending Titles 6, 8, and 15 of the State and Municipal Code promoting maintenance of buildings in public places. Mr. Fleischman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you, shall we say, once again, Ordinance 1019, which makes various amendments to Titles 6, 8, and 15 of the city code. These are the so-called downtown improvement amendments that we've discussed several times. At your last meeting, the council approved the first consideration of the ordinance and requested that the ordinance be changed to expand the area that the regulations that apply in the downtown apply. That change has been made on page two of five of the, of the ordinance in the scope of regulations, as well as in section, I know there were two places, oh, on page one in section two of the ordinance regarding smoking. So, previously, the ordinance had referred to the designated, the area designated as downtown on the comprehensive plan map. Now, it is that area, as well as properties on both sides of North First Avenue, between Water Street and Washington Street. If enacted, the, the ordinance would establish a requirement citywide for owners of animals to pick up their pet waste after the pet deposits them. It would prohibit the smoking of tobacco, marijuana, the use of e-cigarettes, the useless of smoke, smokeless tobacco, or smoking or vaping in front of street, the front street facade of any building in the downtown area.
Mr. Fleischman?
It would...
Smokeless tobacco, wasn't it?
No, I'm sorry, not smokeless tobacco, just smoking or vaping. It would, in the downtown area, require that the exterior of non-residential properties be kept free of debris, trash, building materials. It would require that plant material be cut down and destroyed between the building facade and the street unless it's in a landscape bed or planter. And it requires that awnings be kept in good repair, free of moss or algae, and be illuminated. So, those are the, the four regulations in the downtown area that this ordinance would establish. So, it is presented for your second consideration, should you choose to adopt it.
Thank you, Dan. Oh, let's see. Council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this? This has been around and around, and a couple of considerations back to staff, and it comes to us for a third consideration of Ordinance 1019. Approve it, approve it with modifications, return it to staff, or retain the code unchanged. Those are some of our given options. What would you folks like to do with this?
I'd like to move to approve Ordinance Number 1019, as modified.
Okay.
Right?
As presented?
As presented with the modifications that were made, that we requested were made last time.
Thank you, councilor. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Jill. We have motion and a second to approve the third consideration of Ordinance 1019 as it's presented. Is there any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Dan, on the illumination and maintenance of awnings, under 15 dot 12 dot 050, number two. That's saying that, I want to make sure I understand this, that if the sidewalk, if the awning is over the sidewalk, it has to illuminate the sidewalk?
That is what the proposed ordinance says, yes.
So, the building currently has awning up there, but no light. Will it be required to install a light?
That is correct.
Who's going to take the calls for the people smoking in front of the bars? Would that be the police department? Rich?
There is a, a smoking police through the state.
Correct.
And they would be the one that would need to be called for the smoking within 10 feet of the, of the doorways, as the state law allows, or does not allow for. But as far as, we would not actively patrol that, for that issue, just because of time and the other types of crimes and stuff that we were dealing with. If we came upon something that was going on at the time, the officers may take, may mention it to somebody, say, "Hey, there's no smoking on here," but it's not something we would actively enforce.
So, if you guys got a complaint, and you're not going to send a code enforcement officer out there at night to watch to make sure, based on this ordinance?
If it, if it was a, if it was a problem, like a problem, like a set area that was always a problem, we would probably send the code enforcement there to deal with it when the code enforcement was on, on duty, but it's not something we would actively...
What time is the code enforcement hours?
During daytime hours.
So, would that code enforcement officer address the individual, or would he address the business?
They would address the business.
And so, the business is supposed to control the public at large on public property, based on this ordinance?
If it, if it's their customers.
Gotcha.
Okay. Other questions, other thoughts? What would you folks like to do? Ready to go? Okay. Would you poll the council, please, Alyssa?
Of course. Counselor Gideball?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
No.
Counselor Ussleman?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, four to one. Thank you, folks. The next thing is Ordinance 1020, establishment of a vertical housing development zone. Mr. Fleischman?
Thank you. Again, Ordinance 1020 is before you for its second consideration. At your last meeting, the first consideration was enacted with a request, I believe it was from Counselor Quigley, that a process be inserted into the proposed code so that if an applicant for... if an applicant for the tax exemption was denied by city staff, that there would be an appeal process to the city council. That has been inserted into the proposed code in section 17, I've got to find it here now, in section 316100, on, starting on page 10 of 15 of the proposed ordinance. And it establishes a procedure for an appeal to be filed with the city council. That procedure was reviewed by the city attorney's office, a couple of tweaks made to it based on their suggestions, and it's included in the proposed ordinance. For, probably more for the benefit of the audience than for your reminder, if enacted, what a vertical housing development zone does is provide a partial exemption from property taxes for new or renovated multi-story buildings that are both commercial and residential in use. And so it is a tool that is part of, that has been recommended by the city's downtown revitalization plan. As proposed, the area for which the partial property tax exemption would be available is the designated downtown area with the mixed-use zones, according to the official zoning map. But the ordinance sets up a procedure should this council or future councils want to establish other vertical housing development zones. I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, the ordinance is presented to you for your second consideration.
Thank you, Dan. Under council deliberation, questions or thoughts on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'll offer a motion to approve revised ordinance number 1020 as presented.
Okay.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Counselor Gladwell seconded that, to approve the second consideration of ordinance 1020. Is there any discussion, please? This has the possibility of, really doing some things to the downtown. People actually living down here. That means stores, more stores, food store. Gee, what else? All kinds of, more restaurants. I should ask Isaac if he could elaborate on, what are the possibilities, Isaac?
Mr. Mayor, can we call for the question first?
What's that?
Call for the question, please.
Okay, all right. I guess not. We're going to, I've got to call for the question. Go ahead and pull the council again, please.
Sure. Counselor Cronquist?
I have to recuse myself of this vote, please.
Counselor Ustleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero, with Counselor Cronquist abstaining.
Okay, preparation of a RFP for consultant services to develop economic development strategies. Mr. Fleischman.
Thank you. So this is, again, is another issue that is held over from your last meeting. At that meeting, I presented to you some questions and ideas as we are preparing the request for proposal for consulting services for the development of economic development strategies for the city. I was, my staff report at that time, and you've got the same staff report this time with a new date instead of two weeks ago's date, lists a number of activities for the consultant to work on as part of the scope of work. Was looking for your feedback of whether there's any of the tasks that are identified here that should not be included, or if you have other tasks in mind that should be included. And also, two, four specific questions that staff looking for direction from the council on in the preparation of this study. The first one is how broadly or narrowly to define the term economic development. Some communities think of economic development as only attracting industrial businesses. Others think of it as any business development activity, industrial, retail, restaurant, service, medical, et cetera. And other communities apply an even broader definition of economic development to mean pretty much any activity that promotes the financial well-being or the economic health of the community. That could include things that lower people's energy costs, but don't directly result in jobs being created or buildings being built. But if the community's sending less money to far-off places like Texas or Saudi Arabia to pay for oil, then there's more money available in the community to do community things. To what extent should marketing be included in the RFP? Is it something that you think that in the future you'd be willing to appropriate city funds to actually go out and market the community? If not, then there's no reason to be discussing that in the RFP. And I guess the other two questions are, besides the things that I've already listed in the staff report, are there activities that you'd like to see done, or are there any of those that you'd like to be removed? So truly, those are the questions. I was hoping to stimulate some discussion among the council as we prepare this document.
I ask that you bring this back to us, maybe for the next meeting, or the next one after that, and keep jabbing us a little bit with what we'd like to see.
At some point, we need to get the RFP out, or nothing will happen.
I have an opinion. I mean, are you wanting, I can answer some of those questions with my opinions.
No, that's fine.
Okay. So, Dan, in your first question about broadly or narrowly, I like, kind of like your middle choice there, not to include everything such as energy saved, but certainly to include anything that creates jobs or helps the economic vitality of the city. You kind of laid out three different scenarios, and I was kind of in the middle of it. As far as actually dedicating money, I guess I feel that that's a premature question. Because I wouldn't say that I would dedicate money, or I wouldn't say that I wouldn't dedicate money. It kind of depends on what the person who, what the recommendations are of the person who looks at the economic development. And so, again, I wouldn't say, oh, yeah, well, I'm ready to dedicate money to it and then be held to something that I don't even know what it is. I guess, I just feel that that's a premature question, that question there. I think that all of the activities that you listed, I thought that they were, they were pretty clear and inclusive of the questions that I would want to see go out for that person to perform for the RFP. And I didn't, I couldn't come up with any that you hadn't already addressed. Brian seconds everything I just said.
Dan, thank you, because the guy from, who owns Love Familia, the Hispanic cider company, you hit him with an email right back. He'd never seen such a fast response from the city before and was thrilled. I hope you've heard from him. If you're not, you certainly well be, because he was just shocked at how forthright our city was in terms of being open to new business. And if there's a small budget that Dan has for that, I have no problem with that. He's very good at getting back to these people who are looking for a kombucha shop or whatever.
Others? I appreciate your comment about the question of marketing being premature, but I guess I threw the question out, thinking that if the answer was hell no, then there's no sense including, developing a marketing, or talking about a marketing strategy in the RFP. If the council is open to the concept in the future, then, you know, let's have that, let's have the consultant talk about that type of stuff as part of the study.
I actually think that it would not be a complete RFP or a complete thing without talking about the marketing piece of that. What we're going to do with whatever information that you're finding out needs to be part of that.
So, Mayor Porter, have we, excuse me, have we considered, instead of an RFP doing like an RFI, to try to get some consultants in to gather information about, that would help solidify some of the questions, or?
We haven't, the draft, actually, I believe I sent out by email last week, is the direction we've been headed, as opposed to a solicit ideas and let's have a discussion.
So with an RFI, we might be able to get a group of consultants just to come in who are interested in doing business with the city of state, and you can ask them some of these questions to find out what sort of offerings those consultants offer as part of their service portfolio. It might help us with knowing what those consultant services look like. And I don't know if part of the RFI would include pricing, you know, but it would certainly help understand kind of the service catalog that those consultants offer. Just a thought.
So have RFI's been effective? And I'm not familiar with ever using an RFI. I don't know.
So in the IT industry, they're very, very, very helpful, because there's a lot of times where we don't know what we want. We don't, the requirements are still somewhat fluffy. So if you, if you find yourself in that kind of a situation, an RFI is a shout-out to all the consultants who want to do business to say, come in so we can ask you a bunch of questions, is all it is.
I understand what it is. I just wonder if it has, if it has been used in this sort of a setting before, and if it, I guess I want to make sure that we're not wasting our time.
Yeah, so for consultant services like procurement, where we were trying to build a procurement system, we had consultants come in for that. Hosting services, where you're trying to put your stuff out in the cloud somewhere, and you don't know all the details around that, having consultants in. So consultant-based services are, yes, very valuable for an RFI. Again, just a thought.
Well, any others?
Being an RFI, RFP, I think it'd be good to get the inside.
Well, who decides that? I guess whoever's. Well, we would at some point, I guess.
It's proposal versus asking information.
Yeah, okay. What would you folks like to do with this?
Dan, could you, could you maybe put some feelers out and see if RFI's have been used by any other municipalities and cities, and if so, if they've been as effective as they are in private? Sometimes, you know, things don't go across as well as we would like them to cross over from private to public, and.
I see the value of an RFI, as Counselor Mullen said, is when you don't really know exactly where you want to go with a project, you're looking for guidance as well as service. So I, that may be helpful here in this case, although I think I've kind of structured a scope of service here that seems like the council says, yeah, this is the way to go, this is what we've got in mind. So I'm not quite sure what value would be added, but then that may be because there's questions out there that we haven't thought of, that someone may come forward and say, here's what you should be doing also.
And if it's a relatively simple process to do, and not very costly, I would be very interested in seeing what kind of response that we would get with an RFI.
Yeah. The draft RFP doesn't just say, do this for us. It also says, tell us what else you think we should be doing. So it's, it's got those elements.
Okay, already in it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we have the, a rare participant from Main Street, we also have the vice president and the president of RDS slash Old Town State, or whatever. Is that something that they could help bring to the table based on Main Street experience? That's a no?
You'd have to ask Main Street. They're not.
Can you guys, looking at the wording we discussed, is that something that a rare or RDS can address, or a Main Street organ can help us with input from?
You finally get a chance to say something, Isaac. Go ahead.
So, Mark, is your question, could we solicit help from Main Street to help decide what we would look for in an economic development plan?
It seems like there's a lot of overlap between what RDS and Main Street do in developing an economic development plan for the city.
I would say that the role of RDS in this, since our focus is on downtown, would be, we would love to be part of the process, especially once we get towards where the consultants are actually coming to town, working with us. We would like to be part of that. But since our focus doesn't extend beyond downtown, to put in time and effort onto a project that doesn't, I mean, we want to benefit the community, obviously, but on a project that extends far beyond what we're really focusing on, that's also something that Main Street advises against all the time. They want us to stay very focused on the small area that we decided on, and so to work on projects at large scale. We'd like to be part of it, but not necessarily kind of taking on the larger role that I think you're suggesting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac. Other thoughts on this? So we could have an RFP and an RFI kind of all in the same proposal? Am I hearing that right?
Well, I, no, I think you, the two are looking for two different sets of information back from consultants. I think I've gotten the feedback I was looking for from the counselors who have offered it, and I'll take the silence from the rest as acceptance, or if not acceptance, at least acquiescence, and go forward.
Go from there, okay. So he doesn't need anything else from us?
If we need, if we need to move the focus of this, if you will, over a little bit, that can be done?
That can be done, and we will talk about that as a staff.
Okay, fine, I'm good.
Thank you.
Do we need to, do we need any kind of vote on this? Probably not. Let's go to new business, there isn't any. Staff commission reports, none. Thank you, folks, for being here this evening.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
I have.
Please.
I'd just like to come back to the Brown House that was brought up, and kind of like to know what or how we can do something. So as a council, can we waive the application cost for the change of city use application? Is that in, within our purview to do, or is that something that we shouldn't be doing? I'm just kidding, I just, as a question, what is, what, where is, what's our stand on that?
I wouldn't say we have a stand on that. That's be a council decision, but the League of Oregon Cities has a policy, guidelines in place, and it is something that I could share with the council, but the league, you know, recommends taking caution, because you get into areas that can have some legal implications. Also, it's good to have a policy in place just because of the precedent you're setting and kind of the concerns it could lead to. So I'd be happy to share what the league's guideline is. We could also talk to our city attorney. But again, that comes down to a council decision, but that is something that, there is a policy in place, a recommended policy in place, or guidelines from the league, just because it is an issue that can be quite concerning.
So Keith, can you, can you put something together and share, and just email it to me, send it to me?
I'll send it to the entire council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great, yeah.
With the league's policy that they have in place.
Okay, great. So the second thing was, is, you know, we have the new, the new gas tax that we have out, that is our local gas tax that we're getting in, and it's supposed out, that is our local gas tax that we're getting in, and it's supposed to be just for streets and improvements and that kind of stuff. Can we, could we, is that, does, do curb cuts fall into that, what we can do with that money?
Well, it's a county road, so I don't think I'd want to spend state and tax dollars on a county road.
Okay, so that, so whatever happens on that road is not us at all, it has to do with Marion County.
That's the county, and they would have to get a permit from the county, I'm sure wouldn't, he's already aware of that.
Okay.
Ms. Stone.
If I may, Wendy Stone, 525 North Myrtle, Stateon. Thank you, mayor and councilors. The, there are curb cuts there, so we aren't certain that those are gonna have to, we aren't certain whether what's there is enough, is part of the problem. The county individual that made that suggestion, as I understood it, we aren't certain if he or she knows that there are curb cuts there. They have a little bit of a built-up asphalt area, so that there isn't a bump on it. It may be fine, we may not have to do it at all, but it's one of the things in the list that.
Okay, Wendy, I'd like to ask that when and if you find out what we actually could do or impact, that you maybe return and give a specific about not only what you need, but how it might be accomplished by us. Because we certainly, I mean, me, as a counselor, certainly wants to support what's happening at the Brown House in any way that I, that can be done while still having good, good government, following good government precedent that's been established.
Thank you.
And so, but yeah, I need a little more specifics as to what that would be, or how we could do that.
I will share with you what I was told by staff about the waiving of the fees. The concern is that if the fees are waived, then down the road, a developer comes along and says, well, you waived the fees for this, I want you to waive the fees for me too. So that's the sticky wicket that we're trying to avoid, both us and the city. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Too often that's been the way it's been. Okay. There is no new business, no staff commission reports, business from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to point out, it's in the future agenda items. Our next city council meeting is during our normal day. It is at a special time and location, it's at 6:00 PM on June 8th at the library. It is presentation, 18th, June 18th, make sure I have that right, at 6:00 PM at the Stateon Library. Sean O'Day is the executive director from the Midland Valley Caucus, will be doing a presentation on the role of city council members in government ethics trainings. This meeting is open to anyone interested in local government, anybody interested in running for the city council, or just anyone looking to know information, more information about our, how our government works. So Sean is a, is a very bright and in tune person, and somebody that can have some great information, so I recommend everybody in the community attend if they can. And we'll, of course, record that on our website. Second, there's been some discussions about water, I anticipated more questions, I guess not. I guess my general comment would be, I do think we're seeing maybe a new trend and issues with algae blooms moving forward, and I think it'll cause some potential changes in, down the road, and some additional work with Oregon Health Authority and with our regional partners. So it is something that we're aware of and working on, continue to be engaged and involved in, so just wanted to touch base on that. With that, I turn it back over to you.
The business from the council.
Mr. Mayor. In regards to the testimony given today, I just want to say that I had multiple conversations with that gentleman regarding his issue, and I read that email several times. And in reading that email, what I find is someone who is very professional in the manner in which they will not cave into idle threats, be they thinly veiled or not, otherwise. I don't want to get too far in the history, but I disagree, or have a different interpretation with the way that was interpreted by the individual that was making that comment today. If I find anything in that email, it's the transparency in which our government currently operates at every department and every level. Yes, the word transparency was in there, was in there frequently. So I just want to say that, given the fact that what I've seen over my time on the council, the transparency was definitely there, and there is no need to say otherwise. I think the information, how it got to that point initially, was based on a false narrative. And I'm glad that people really look into what's going on in the city, and I don't think that we narrowly just shove everything under the desk, or under the carpet, as may be. So I think they're doing a great job. And to that point, you all received an audit notice from our accountants, and you'll see that in that audit notice, there's not one mention of anything that needs to be addressed. Looks like a past blank colors to me, so that's what gets you the two JO Government Accounting Awards back-to-back, so thank you, Keith.
Yeah, well, let me echo that again, that this is a professional staff, and they deserve our, and I think they have our support. Unfortunately, there are, there are those forces out there that like to tear things up. So, business from the mayor, I have one thing to date. You folks all know that Norpac is basically giving up on strawberries. They tell us they'll run five shifts this year. Not five days, not five weeks, five shifts of berry pack. I'd like to see us have a strawberry industry in this town, again.
The Stateon Rotary has all of the berries that you would like to buy. I have the forms with me, and, and so anyone that would like a bucket of sliced and prepared strawberries, Wednesday's your last day to buy them, just let me know.
That's here, that's here, but we could, maybe more.
Lebanon had a heck of a strawberry fest last Saturday.
Strawberries are here, it's a good thing. Some of these meetings are better than others. This was a mediocre one in some ways, but we did get some things done, and thank you, staff. Dan? Yes, and then we're done.
I think it's probably been two summers ago, my name's Dan Morgan, 2195 Cardinal here in Stateon, and I think it's been two summers ago now that I came to the council under your issues with tall weeds, grass, brush, and so forth, on Kendall Way. And in turn, I quickly found out that that was county property, the owner on the north side of, or the east side of Kendall Way was in the county, and there was nothing the city could really do about it. I then kind of wanted to do it when the city took over the property, I thought, I should go back to the city and see if we couldn't get that cleaned up. But then that was part of my reason for asking my questions earlier, was I thought, nah, they're going to be widening Kendall Way, they'll have a contractor in there with a bulldozer or whatever, he'll take care of the six-foot-high blackberries and the Scotch broom and the weeds and everything. I grit my teeth every time I go down Kendall Way to a nice new development down there, but have to drive by that ugly mix-match of dead blackberries, green blackberries, brush, and so forth. Now that it sounds like it's going to be some time yet before a developer can get in there on that, is there any way the city could put an example out of, here's how we want all the other property owners to contact us, we'll clean up the brush and blackberries and weeds along Kendall Way?
Great idea.
I mean, it's a city ordinance, I presume it's an ordinance, that you can only have them so, weeds so high in your yard, and you're obligated to mow them and everything, and yet here on city property, they've went unchecked, and like I said, I'd been patient, because I kept thinking these steps were gonna roll in this summer, and I thought, finally this summer, I won't have to grit my teeth when I drive down Kendall Way, and we're still looking at it. So if you can make something like that happen to clean that up, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I'm sure it'll get somebody's attention, I hope so anyway. Anything else tonight? Yes, Paige, Ms. Hook.
I'll be quick. My name is Paige Hook, I live at 2088 Quail Run Avenue, and I've been waiting an hour to say this. I feel like our city staff has shown nothing but courtesy from the moment that I've met them, to the, to all the questions that I've had, I've had multiple questions, I'm really, I'll ask a lot of questions. And so when I hear someone coming in and speaking about our public servants that way in our town, it gets me a little bit upset, because I know that they're good people that are working to make our city better. So I just want to say thank you for all that you guys do, and continue being as great as you guys are.
Thank you, Paige. I'm sure they will. Anything else, and we're done. Thank you.